Good evening. Welcome to tonight's work session. And I'd like to ask Dr. Watts -- sorry, I'm calling the meeting to order. I'd like to ask Dr. Watts to begin the work session.
Absolutely. Thank you. President Ben Gaddasalam, members of the board, Ms. Hallie, staff and friends. At this time, I would like to call our Chief Human Resources Officer, Mariah Martin, to begin the presentation regarding certificated basic education staffing allocations for the 2019-2020 year. All right? Thank you.
Thank you. Good evening, President Ben Gaddasalam, members of the board, general community. Really excited to share with you some up-to-date information on the certificated basic education staffing allocations, which will be sent out to schools on April 1st. And so I want to talk about the fiscal component of that. And so I will be calling on my friend and colleague, Dr. Jewel Harmon. She'll be sharing some information as well. And also, I just want to publicly thank the entire executive cabinet coming alongside as we've really thought through a lot of these conversations. And also to thank members of our team, Jamie Frazier, who is our Director of Human Resources Operations, and Tiffany Phelps, who is our Supervisor of Human Resources Operations and the work that she's been doing. So they're here tonight. They very seldom come out from behind those -- all that work, but they're doing phenomenal work. I wanted to thank them for that. So as we start and we think about allocations, we have to and must take a look at the financial outlook in the four-year picture there. So in 2019-2020 specifically, in the four-year outlook, we see a few things. And so this is a continuation of the conversation we had last week at the board work session, where Ben did a phenomenal job of walking us through that four-year outlook and then also some of the different interests, whether or not 5% fund balance, avoiding deficit spending, and so forth. 2019-2020 reflects a $12 million decrease in revenue from the previous year due to the levy cap. And Ben has done a great job of sharing that with us, and we knew that that was coming. It also reflects increased expenditures from our commitments on compensation with all of our KSD labor partners. We bargained with several groups, and so it does reflect that. It reflects decreased revenue resulting from approximately 700 less students in 1819 than in 1718. And so last year at this time, we built allocations for 700 more students. As we know, if the projections weren't wrong, 700 students just were no longer part of Kent -- that had been part of Kent before that. It also reflects a decreased revenue due to a projected student enrollment decrease of 100 students for the upcoming year. So 700 students this last -- in the year we're in, and then 100 students less is projected -- are projected for next year. It reflects the projected increased expenditures of implementing the State Employee Benefits Board, SEB, which we've heard lots about. Approximately, it's a $4 million cost in the 2019-2020 school year. And it reflects the added revenue and increased expenditures of implementing K3 class size. So all of those things lay out for us our landscape or our context of our financial situation. And that's the context that we must consider when we're doing staffing. So as we think about balancing our financial resources and the human resources in developing staffing allocations, both are important and both must be considered. On the left side, we've heard Ben say quite often and agree that we need to seek to build long-term financial sustainability as a district. And so last week, we talked a little bit about the interest of all of these things, but specifically avoiding deficit spending and what that would look like as we move forward. From the human resources side, we're looking at how do we allocate the appropriate number of qualified staff to ensure that opportunity and access continue for rigorous instruction? Of course, we need to commit and abide by our commitments with our labor partners through our class size. Also minimizing any impact to students and staff as we implement a financially sustainable staffing model. And then ensuring additional staffing supports are in place. And that's often done through categorical funds. So as we balance those two pieces, that's how we began to develop our staffing allocations. So our certificated basic education staffing allocations in 1920. So the first thing we want to share is that through this, we've been able to determine we will not implement a reduction in force in KSD for the upcoming year, 2019-2020, for any position, which means that we can say clearly, you will not see a resolution for a RIF before you on any consent agenda. We will eliminate 65.6 FTE in certificated basic education positions through attrition. And we had an opportunity at one point before the CTE numbers came in. It looked like it was around the 70-ish mark. With the CTE registrations complete, we're at 65.6. And that was finalized, I believe, yesterday or today. Those numbers are finalized. We have built the allocation sheets based on those numbers. The reduction in FTE also aligns with Dr. Watts' message last spring that we would eliminate through attrition 60 certificated positions in 2018-19 and 60 in 1920. So as we think about what this means financially, Jewel, do you want me to just take this piece or do you want to?
So last week when we met in a work session, we talked about kind of our budget philosophies as we moved forward as a district. And then we began thinking about all of the things that Chief Martin just spoke with you about. And we realized that what we're presenting to you is an approximate $8 million savings. We recognize that that is not at the exact dollar amount of any of those kind of budget philosophies that we shared last week. But it does address all of those things, like a commitment to an instructional program that is robust and allows our students to meet their career and college-ready graduation requirements as they move forward across the state, that allow for exploration of personalized pathways and other specialized interests, and lead us to a pathway of sustainability at a reasonable rate. So we are still holding to that. It also puts us in a position where anything that we do that leads to the unknown -- so there are several unknowns out there that were just shared -- SEB, K3 class size, changes to the levy amounts we're allowed to collect, would put us in a better position. So anything would be either a cost-neutral or an added value to Kent School District's fund balance and revenues. So.
So as we think about the actual development of the actual staffing model, this is how we did that work. We allocated certificated staff at lower enrollment numbers with 800 less students than in 1819 with the class-size parameters in the KEA-CBA. And we did not staff to the cap. We staffed with some space so that we can anticipate some possible growth. And we also recognize that when we bargained these class sizes with our KEA partners, they recognized this is an appropriate class size. So I believe it honors the agreement that we made with them. We did not implement a 1:17 ratio in grades K through 3. If they -- that the Senate does not vote to delay it, class-size implementation, which we strongly expect that they will do. But if for some reason they didn't, additional staffing would be put into place to ensure compliance. And so that leads me to my next point, that we built in contingency to address class sizes that will begin to move. It may be possible that maybe teachers who are in grades 4 through 6 will need to shift and move and reassign to K3 to address that if we have to implement the K3, which again, we don't necessarily see any indication that they're not going to delay it for another year. We also implemented splits as needed to ensure all class sizes are within the ratio and the cap for that grade. And quite a few years ago, we made a concerted effort as a district to eliminate all splits other than high cap. We recognize that this is expensive, and we actually have a PowerPoint that kind of walks through that whole process that we've attached to this PowerPoint so anyone can kind of think about, okay, what does a split actually cost? And when we talk about splits, for those that are from other districts or maybe other states, a split is a -- what some would call a combination classroom, or two grades within the same classroom. So what is not part, and we still have the 72 before we factored out the CTE piece, but the 65.6 reduction in certificated basic ed. At the elementary level, the eliminated FTE does not include those positions funded by categorical dollars. It does not include the music PE or library media positions. Now although those are also enrollment-driven, they're also tied to the number of teachers. And so we'll have to take a look at that. Without getting too much into the weeds, there's a portion in the KEA contract that talks about moving from the 40-minute planning to the 50-minute planning, which will be an increase in some specialists. And then we also have that offset by the fact that we'd have less teachers. So we don't foresee any additional cost in music PE, library, and media. It also does not include any dual-language or high-cap programming. At the secondary level, it does not include those categorical-funded positions, nor does it include CTE positions, which are funded completely separately. So what supports do we have for building leaders and implementing staffing allocations in their schools? As I mentioned, I believe already, March 26th, which was yesterday, we had an HR professional development session. The words from our facilitators were, "It was packed." We had it full of administrators who wanted to know all about what the staffing and allocations are looking like. The PowerPoint for that session can be found here, and we will have it posted on Board Doc, so anyone in the community is welcome to look at that. And it walks through the whole process of what principals are expected to do with their staffing once they receive it on April 1st. And then on March 29th, we're meeting with principals by level to walk through reductions that we'll see at each individual level and how we can provide support there. April 1st, all principals will receive their specific school allocations, and they receive that through a SharePoint site, and they have access to all the information, everything from the endorsement of every teacher in their school to the certification status, to everything that they need to be able to do the work before them. On April 2nd and 4th, we'll have two hours on each day, the roundtable optional sessions for building administrators to come in and work with their colleagues and district staff on their staffing plans. So they'll receive their allocations, which tell them how many teachers, how many staff, clerical, administrator, everything that they can expect to have, and then a list of every staff member. And then we begin to walk through whether it's overstaffing or understaffing and how to adjust through the IVT process or the involuntary transfer process. And continuously, we've been working alongside the Edlees. We talked with them on Monday about how we can come together to provide support and provide that for them on a one-to-one basis. So again, the timeline, April 1st, allocations will go out to principals. Then all staffing is due back to HR on April 15th, and that allows us to see where we have overstaffing situations. During this time, individuals are resigning, creating positions, and will continue to resign, usually all the way up until July 1. That's the date that they are supposed to submit their resignation. April 26th through the 26th, we'll do our involuntary transfer process. And at that point, any positions that are open will be posted. And I made a note here that current employees are placed first, and IBTs have a right to return for two years under the current KEA contract. Then the positions are posted externally. So even in July or August, if a position opens up, we check first to see if there was an IBT who would like to return before we post it. And with that, I'd like to open it up to any questions.
One was just a quick clarification of that, and I think I understand that, but I should want to be clear. So you mean you would look back for who was involuntary transferred for the past two years and see if they want to come back to a position they were involuntarily transferred from?
That's correct.
Okay. That was my kind of clarification.
Yes.
Of where we're going. And I know you had someone there, and so I guess I want to know what more -- what resources -- what are the typical types of resources that you would provide to principals? It seems like a lot of this is going to be next on them to do their allocations, that they are provided with, or what is available to them?
I'm going to call on someone who does this work all the time, Tiffany. Come on up. She's excited about this. You can see it. Tiffany is our frontline support for our principals in his run. I'm trying to think of how many staffing processes you've run, probably -- how many years have you been doing the staffing?
I've been in HR for 12 years.
So she's been running this. So talk a little bit about some of the supports that we provide for this process.
So as far as the allocations piece and the staffing piece, we will work with each individual principal and help them find the right person, especially in our secondaries, where they have endorsements, many different endorsements, to make sure that the individuals are being placed in the right classrooms. So they are receiving a list of all of the endorsements for their individuals in their buildings, along with the seniority list. If that building is overstaffed, then we're going to be working with the principal to make sure that we have the correct person who is involuntarily transferred. In the contract language, there is voluntary transfer, so we also look at those to see who's going to be able to work with us and get that moved around. So there's many different -- we've got different categorical groups that we work with, our CTE, our LAP and TIDL, that we make sure that we are abiding by the state and federal rules for those also when we're entering people into different positions.
And I think that's a really important point to make, is the voluntary aspect of this was added, I think, two years ago in the contract. And it was a way to -- KEA came to us and said, "We'd like to be able to have people volunteer if they want to move." Now, once a position's posted, there's always that voluntary movement that can happen. But they wanted to provide that option should someone want to move instead of someone being involuntarily transferred. And so that's something that we've been implementing, so we've been walking through that with the principals and what that means, and how do you make those situations known? So how do you share with your staff? We have -- we're overstaffed by about two positions. It looks like we may need to IVT. And is there anyone who's interested in possibly being part of the voluntary transfer process? And then there's a whole set of rules that we abide by in the KEA contract. So this is another form of support. Another piece we're going to be doing is with the master scheduling, because once you get, as a secondary principal, you receive your FTE. It may look like 40.2. You build your master schedule out based on those registrations and the amount of FTE you have. So one of the questions we get a lot is, "How can I run this many sections?" And so we're looking at the number of students in each section. Do you offer some things in first semester but not second semester, those types of things? And we've got some really wonderful master schedulers in this district, people who know it very, very well. And so we're asking them to come on April 2nd and 4th to help our principals with that.
Thank you. That answers your question.
Mariah, on one of the earlier slides, you said that we were looking at possibly not having another 100 students for next year. How did we come to with that number?
Sure. So we get our enrollment projections from finance every December, and they did the process of -- that they normally run. Do you want to speak a little bit about enrollment projections?
So it's interesting. I just said to Ben, "It's time to dust off the enrollment projections PowerPoint and be prepared to kind of talk about that in depth with our stakeholders and with our principals again." So the short of it is, the process that's used is kind of cohort survival. And that's a complicated way of talking about kind of birth projections and then rollover as students grow up through grade levels, what we expect to see each year in the next grade level. And then taking into consideration our recent decline in enrollment. So although statistically, a model might project that -- so if you do a model that has five to seven years of history in it, it might project that we would still have increases in enrollment, because just mathematically, history says that we've grown. But with decreases so great, it doesn't make wise fiscal sense, when you're building a fiscal plan, to use that model and account for growth in that way. So we took a more conservative approach and added in what we consider a reasonable amount of decline, because no model right now is predicting that we're going to have the type of decline that we had the year before, because everything is based on kind of history, and history doesn't show that. So it's a combination of history and then best evidence of we're not anticipating growth, we're actually going to anticipate decline, but not at the same rate that we had before. So we're not anticipating. And then in some areas, so there's that piece, and then there's also the consideration of working with our facilities partners, who are in neighborhoods, looking at what apartments are coming, what subdivisions are growing, and how those builders think that they will be filled, and what that means for the number of families with school-aged children. So even in the midst of that decline, there is still growth in some areas, and so all of that is kind of considered as we do this process. But it is definitely time to kind of reengage in that detail about what enrollment looks like and how that happens, the projections and how that happens across the district.
And then on a later slide, it said we were looking at 800 students less than the 1819. Are we?
So I don't -- I was like, "I can talk about that, or you can."
Yeah. So then we built the staffing allocations last spring, and we were expecting all the students that were with us to continue to come to us. What we saw when school started is that we had 700 less students. So we had built staffing for 700 students more than actually arrived. Now we're saying, okay, so we're building staffing this year. It's not just that 700, it's now the 100 for the next year.
Okay. Got it. So it's not a new 800?
Yeah.
Thank you.
Yes. I did want to ask about the 71 -- oh, sorry, 65, is it, attrition? And just wanted to get a sense of how that framework will be laid out on April 2nd and the 4th. So do we discuss the needs of our students at all in this framework, or is it mainly driven by enrollment?
When we talk about certificated basic education staffing, it is basically run by enrollment. When we're looking at clerical staff, administrator staff, we've factored in quite a variety of needs, everything from ability to free and reduced lunch to lots of different things. So you do see some equitable staffing formulas in clerical administrator. We want to continue. We're doing some ground-level work right now, research on what would equitable classroom staffing look like in a year like this, when 1920 is so tight and we're trying to look at avoiding deficit spending. We're just within a real narrow margin of how much FTE we even have to work with. That being said, staffing allocations, when they go out on Monday, it will be a prime time for principals to take a look at that and say, "With their categorical dollars, what is it I'm trying to do to meet the needs of my students?" So whether it's the classroom size, that's kind of enrollment-driven, but then the categorical support, your TIDL, LAP dollars that are available, all of that information will also be on the allocation sheet. They'll see the dollar amount. They also have their budget builder. So what they'll begin to do is think through, "What specific types of needs do I need to meet in my school?" And then they have the opportunity through the budget builder and the categorical funds that will be listed there, which are preliminary funds, to begin to think about what would that look like staffing-wise. So when they come in on the 2nd and 4th, that will actually be a really rich conversation. We've asked Ron and her team to be there on those days as well, to kind of walk through, "What could you look at?" There may be pair of positions. There may be certificated positions. Each school is different in how they use their categorical funds. Israel, is there anything you'd like to add to that?
A couple of things to add to that. Just for our understanding as a board, dollars out of TIDL-1 and LAP are supplemental in nature. They're not meant to supplant basic education. With that said, we do want to coordinate their funding to meet the needs of our kids. And I think that's part of -- Director Hardy, you mentioned what some other supports. My team's also there supporting, always on, "So what are those compliance pieces and how can you put positions together?" Because if you see an FTE that's out in a school, oftentimes, they're a .2 and a .8 that are put together. Well, there are requirements with that, and so we're always constantly working with our principals to try to leverage a dollar as much as possible.
So the question is, are we going to be able to build -- or the educators going to be able to build a budget that looks at different scenarios? You know, looking at K through 3, the SEB, and we have our categorical funds, which are going to go down because of our enrollment that's gone down. So are we going to be able to play with those particular scenarios?
They absolutely can play with categorical -- play with it. I mean, they can use the categorical dollars in a way that makes sense for their school and is in compliance with federal and state laws, right? In regards to their basic ed allocations, K through 6, they've got the number of teachers to run a classroom. But let's take splits, for example. It may make more sense to say, "We need a 2-3 split instead of a 1-2 split." We're certainly going to allow them to do that and work with them to do that. So they have a sense of where they might want to build some splits. And so that's one example of some things that they could do to address some concerns. They can also continue to look at their enrollment numbers. And this has happened several times, where we believe that the kindergarten numbers, we're going to look at a certain point, so we may have allocated three kindergarten teachers. But they've got their registration packets, and it's only showing that they need two teachers. But they say, "But my third grade is really coming in strong. I'd like to have that teacher in third grade instead." And so we've worked with them, as long as they're staying within the overall allocation.
Okay. All right. Any other questions? All right. Debbie's not here tonight, so thank you so much for the presentations.
Thank you.
Ms. Martin and everyone. I guess we're early. We are going to recess our work session for an executive session for approximately 30 minutes to discuss with legal counsel representing the district litigation or potential litigation to which the district is likely to become a party, and we'll begin at 6:30 p.m. Thank you. All right. Good evening, everyone. Welcome. We'd like to reconvene and call the regular meeting to order, and I have asked Mr. Austin Dickinson to lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance. Please rise.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic whose hands one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Right. Thank you, and welcome again to everyone this evening. Vice President Strauss is traveling on business, and so she is excused for tonight. Well, this is the meeting of the Kent School District Board, which is held in public to comply with the Open Public Meetings Act. We are going to read out a little bit of the process for audience participation tonight. The purpose of board meetings is for the board to conduct its business in public. During the meeting, the board will listen to but not respond to comments from visitors. Those wishing to comment must complete a comment card and give it to the board secretary before the meeting begins or no later than Agenda Item 3.0, which is our presentations. No cards will be accepted once presentations have begun. So abusive public comments personally directed towards staff members will not be tolerated, and we'd like to ask that you please refrain from mentioning names or titles of individuals. And the president may interrupt or terminate an individual's statement when it's too lengthy, obscene, or irrelevant. When it is your turn to address the board, please state your name at the start of your testimony. Please limit your remarks to three minutes, and you will hear a timer when three minutes are up. We will stop you at that point, as there are others who would like to speak tonight. And visitors who have completed a comment card indicating a desire to speak to an Agenda item will be called at that portion of the agenda. Per board procedure, written material to provide board members with background information should be submitted to the superintendent's office at least one week in advance of the meeting. That said, I will ask Dr. Watts if there are any changes to tonight's agenda.
Thank you. President Ben Gaddasalam, members of the board, Ms. Hallie, staff and friends, there are no changes to the agenda this evening.
All right. We will then move on to 2.0 recognition. And I have asked Director Hardy to read our proclamation for the Occupational Therapy Month. And Director Hardy?
Yes. Whereas the American Occupational Therapy Association has declared the month of April 2019 to be known as National Occupational Therapy Month, and whereas the profession of occupational therapy makes valuable contributions to helping people live life to its fullest after an illness or injury, and whereas the services of occupational therapy are available to citizens of Kent through hospitals, home health agencies, schools, clinics, and nursing homes, and whereas the health and productivity of our citizens depend upon the effective use of healthcare resources, including the important services of occupational therapists and occupational therapy assistants. Therefore, let it be resolved that the Kent School District Board of Directors hereby proclaims the month of April 2019 as Occupational Therapy Month, calls upon all citizens to recognize the achievements and contributions of these valued health professionals.
All right. Thank you. And we'd like to call on Ms. Jeannie Charvey, Occupational Therapist Lead, to accept the proclamation. Thank you.
Okay. I'm Jeannie Charvey. I'm the co-lead of the OT work group and also the president of the Washington Occupational Therapy Association. We have 28 OTs and OT assistants that work in the Kent School District, and our role is to help the children in their occupation at school, which is to be a student and engage in all the different things they have to do throughout the day. And we love working with your kids. It's -- and we serve 3- through 21-year-olds. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Would you like -- Let's take a photo with you.
Oh, okay. Thank you.
All right. So we're moving on to our 3.0 presentations, and we will start with our December 2018 financial statement. We have a speaker to begin. Ken Smith will be speaking on 3.01, please.
Thank you, board, for the opportunity to address you.
And we will start with our December 2018 financial statement. We have a speaker to begin. Ken Smith will be speaking on 3.01. Please.
Thank you, Board, for the opportunity to address you. In terms of the Oregon State Office of Public Instruction, Washington State Office of Public Instruction, OSPI, the state accounting manual was changed. They make updates every year. March 15th, they came out, and I'll read from the Attachment A. Near page 3-54, inter-fund transfer guidance is modified to highlight the school board resolution requirement. The first sentence is added to the guidance. And the first sentence says, "A properly executed board resolution authorizing an inter-fund transfer is required." Since the $3.2 million transfer that you've heard about before has not been authorized by the board in a duly executed meeting, all of the numbers that you're looking at for your fund balance is overstated by $3.2 million until the board would take action to do a formal resolution. Also, in the December statement, the fund balance is at a very high point. It would be nice to know or to ask, how much of that is due to the one-time McCleary money or other outside factors, and how much is due to any change in operational process or structural changes in the district? In terms of the February fund balance that you'll get in the next item, I think there's a timing surplus that might be a concern, that the spending is at 46% and the revenue's at 50%. So about 4% of the budget, which times your budget's about $15 million. So in the February number, which will be the second one, those fund balance numbers could be 15 or 16 million dollars higher in terms of as you annualize where you're going to get at the end of the year. And the Executive Director of Finance has been warning about that. And last item, the superintendent and the board remain in violation of Policy 6002. And someone did forward me something from the board that comments at board meetings will be responded to at the district website. So I don't know if that would be something to comment on. If there's a plan to bring that to an agenda item, are you going to fix the fact that the board is out of compliance, and the superintendent's out of compliance for getting a plan to fix that 6002? Thank you for the time to speak.
I think we will start also with our students, because they may need to get back. Okay. Communication, audience? Okay. All right. We apologize. We're going to wait until communication from the audience. Okay. We will start with our December 2018 financial statement, 3.
It's my pleasure to present on both the December financial statement, and then with the chair's indulgence, I'll just transition. Do you want to do a break between the two? Or do I go? I don't know if you're taking comment on the first one, but in any event, I'm up for two continuous presentations. The first thing that I'd like to note is that although you have the December financial statement in your board materials, January has also now been completed. It just didn't make the cutoff for the board packet. So you'll see January in the next board packet and posted to the website. So by now, you've seen this structure. And so I will not belabor the descriptions of essentially what this is telling you here in four slides. The first is a month-to-month comparison of fund balance over the last four years. And you see that December was a $23.2 million ending fund balance in the general fund, which compares to negative $2.48 million from the prior December, when you consider the fact that $10 million was from the inter-fund loan, right? So the true fund balance for that month. The next two slides give you the staffing, both on the certificated and the classified side, just the same as you've seen in previous meetings. What you're seeing here on the certificated side is, again, consistent with prior months, certificated staffing is at its lowest levels. Remember, that's also conflating the issue of enrollment as well, right? So our enrollment has also dropped. But just strictly on staffing, we're down about 66 from the prior year, and the number of 1795 roughly in December of 2018 is the lowest it's been in the last four years that we're measuring here in this slide. Then transitioning to classified staff, you see a similar picture. The number of 1,000, roughly 13.5, is the lowest classified staffing level in the district in the last four years. And that's down roughly about 47 FTE from the prior December, again, month-to-month comparison. Okay. Any questions about that before I talk about the balance sheet? Okay. So each time I do the presentation of the financial statements, I want to highlight something that you're maybe not getting in the budget status presentations, something that maybe shows up on the balance sheet rather than the statement of revenues, expenditures, and fund balance. So now seems to be an appropriate time to talk about the inter-fund loan. We've had a discussion. I've presented on the inter-fund loan a couple of months leading up to this, keeping a good eye on our cash situation as a district. March is typically our low point. It's the low point typically because it precedes April, which then, of course, is the spring collections. So it is our recommendation at this point that we pay back the inter-fund loan in its entirety for this year. There was some consideration about what it means to pay it back this year versus possibly needing it next year, depending on what materializes and a whole host of things. But I think it's probably the best good faith move at this point to pay it back. We think that our cash situation for the remainder of this year is sufficient to support that. So what you would see, if, nothing would change as to the authority the board has granted, just as to the amount. So we would essentially take that authority down to zero. So no action is necessarily required of the board. But just so you're aware of what's happening, so the next time you saw the balance sheet, you would see that repayment of that $10 million. In fact, you would not see that $10 million line that's highlighted there under liabilities. So that is the plan, and that would occur on the last day of this month. If there are no further questions about the monthly statement, I would transition to the budget status update. Okay. Karen, how do I get to it? Right here?
Right there.
Good. Sorry. Got it. There we go. All right. Yeah. Okay. So we're, at this point, presenting preliminary February data. And you will get the same sort of content that you have customarily received in these reports, so no change in the structure. So first slide is revenues by source. Again, we're looking at both our original adopted budget and the revised F-200 in relationship to where we're at now. And I think there's a couple of important things. This is going to be a theme of this presentation that I'll carry through to the very final slide. Couple of things to start to notice as we get into the spring. All right. So here you see that we are at 50.25% of revenue collections overall. See that at the bottom right? Okay. That's a little higher than is typical for this time last year or this time the year before. So last year, we were about 47%. Year before that, we're about 45.5%. Okay. So I'm going to give you a thought, a moment to think about why that might be. Okay. The reason pops off at the top there in the 1,000 series, the local taxes. Okay? So remember, this is a transition year for local taxes. The first part of the year, calendar year 18, we had the high property tax rates. Calendar year 19, the state now is implementing those reduced $1.50 per thousand rates. Very large difference in the amount that we can collect. So naturally, a greater percentage of our annual levy collection is going to show earlier in the year, because that's where the greatest amount of property tax rate and collection is occurring. Okay? So we are preparing, we are planning for lower collections in the spring, but you will see a higher percentage collection now for the difference in those rates. Does that make sense? That's an important concept to understand a later slide. So we are at 50.25 in aggregate and 61.06 in local tax. Not unexpected, as far as I'm concerned. Now, looking at expenditures, we're exactly halfway through the fiscal year, so you're looking at 50% in terms of the target. We're at 46.26%. That's pretty close to where we've been in prior years. So in the last five years, we have been in the range of 46% to 49% in terms of expenditure year-to-date. So a little on the low end of that, but as we would expect. Not dissimilar from previous presentations, the one program that's popping out is pupil transportation. We've had several conversations with them about it. There's factors that are beyond their control in terms of the costs that they're incurring. I know you had a work session with them. We've been in regular communication with them, but they're aware of it. But there are certain services that we provide students when they need it, and it just is. It's a caseload-driven factor. So it isn't necessarily a reflection of indiscriminate spending or not-good budgeting as much as meeting the needs of students when they have them, how they have them. Okay. Expenditure by object. Again, you're looking at the same 50% threshold as being in the middle of the year. I think the high-level concept to grasp onto here is that compensation is tracking very close to budget, has been. So you're seeing, for all the 2, 3, and 4,000 series expenditures, 48.19%. Well, 50% of the year, that's right about where you would expect to be. Okay? It's the non-salary expenditures where we continue to exercise great measures of austerity. Every line other than the 7,000 series, a lot of the contracts, obviously, you are contractually bound to a certain amount, and you're not necessarily making week-to-week or month-to-month decisions about how much you're going to spend. You've signed a contract, you're in for that contract, you're in for that expenditure. But supplies, materials, travel, and capital outlay are all well below budgeted, although in some cases, above last year's spending. So you'll see another slide where we're spending more than we did last year, but we're still way, way below what we've allocated for that purpose. And that is by design. We're still very much consider ourselves under austerity measures. Okay. Slide 6 is year-to-date revenues. I want you to see the same trend there. Levy collection down, state collection up, right? Not unexpected and not totally offsetting. So that negative 7% figure, that will get larger and larger as we get through the year, right? Especially after our April collections. Okay? The state general and state special, or state special purpose funding mechanisms, those are more normalized, so we tend to get those on a regular schedule. Okay? But this is the year of the big shift. One's going up, one's going down. Okay. Year-to-date expenditures, comparing year-to-year. So previously, we looked at this in terms of in relationship to budget. Now we're looking at it year-to-year. Compensation, tracking pretty closely at 2.54%. What that's pretty much telling you is that of all of the staffing decreases that we saw in the previous presentation, there's an offsetting effect to the commitments we've made to our labor partners for compensation. So those are the two big changes, and that's what's netting out to about 2.5%, okay, year-to-date. Different story to tell in the MSOC environment. We're still well below budget, but we're above last year's expenditures. Both things expected, as far as I'm concerned. Okay. Enrollment continues to be interesting. So remember, we did our F-200 and revised the enrollment. We're now at 138 net of that revision, although 72 of that is the K-12 general population, right? So some of this is in running start. But enrollment continued to fall beyond the F-200. And then in the next slide, you'll see, however, the curve continues. So you saw this exact curve last month. We had this exact same conversation when February was still propped up. Again, March is propped up flat. So look at, I would, the thing to do here is to compare yellow to gray, all right? As gray was last year. So clearly, a different dynamic. All right. We started to see the decline in enrollment in January, February of last year. We're not on that course, which is good, but it means there's a different dynamic in the district. And perhaps in the region is my hypothesis. So as you know, the district has been working on the, what is known as the enrichment budget, the sub-fund budget. All districts are required by law to develop a budget that will demonstrate to the community what they intend to spend local levy funding on. Districts are developing a variety of different options. What this chart shows you is the relationship between what the state is providing us for certain titles and what we are spending for certain titles in basic education programs. So just so you're clear, we have a lot more than 1,197 teachers, right? But in basically, if you considered all the programs, but in just our basic ed programs. And so I thought I'd take this opportunity to kind of tell you what course we're on as it relates to the sub-fund and what it means. So every district is in a similar situation in that generally, they hire more people than the state funds, right? And they've got to make a decision about how they're going to represent their levy sub-fund. One approach is to take staff and to identify certain staff as being levy-funded and certain staff as being a basic ed-funded. After discussions in the district, that seems pretty problematic, as most of the roles are very similar. So you can imagine taking teachers or principals or any of these groups and trying to determine who would possibly construe as being non-basic education. That's all sorts of problems, right? That's where a lot of districts started. We have kind of moved in the direction of saying, okay, once we've established an entire group, an entire staffing group, a percentage of that entire group will be apportioned to the levy sub-fund, so that you don't get into distinguishing between, I think the woman who just presented from the Sykes, I believe it was. Could you imagine trying to pick five Sykes that would be part of the program of basic education? It just doesn't make any sense. So this sort of percentage apportionment approach is the direction we're headed, using this sort of information that you have here on this chart. Any questions about that? Okay. I think that's going to probably be the popular approach across the state, and it's not as easy as it sounds. But philosophically, that's kind of where we're headed. So the final slide shows a fund balance projection of $16.5 million. This continues to assume reservations and designations of about $3.55 million. And if I may, I'm going to skip right to this chart to illustrate a point we started with, which is that, and I think it touches, to some extent, on the gentleman's comments that preceded me. So this is a different year, right? This year looks different. We've never had a year where our tax rates are so radically different from the first half of the year to the second half of the year, right? So you look at that black dotted line, and you see it's atypical, right? It doesn't follow the course of the other lines. Okay. Why is that? Well, there's quite a few reasons, actually. But my theory is, the number-one reason is that we are front-loading a lot of our property tax collections early in the year, for all the reasons we talked about. So it's going to, that dotted line is going to make it look like, I mean, even at this point in the month of February... point in the month of February, we are above both the light blue, orange, and dark blue lines, right? So I'll ask you, are we going to finish above the light blue, orange, and dark blue lines? Well, your presentation says we won't, right? Your presentation says we won't even come close to that. So the curve is going to look different this year, just because of the lopsided nature of collections. And you should just kind of be prepared for that and know that, and one, not, you know, it's not wrong for a year to look atypical. This is an atypical year, essentially. And enrollment factors into that as well, but I think that the property tax rate is an overriding consideration. Okay? So with that, I'm happy to take any questions you may have.
Denise? Would you like to give?
Two questions. One, just to kind of, so when we look at that projected, what I think you're talking about, when we see this show up, is that jump from March to April, that increase in funds that we would normally collect is going to be less because we have a significantly less portion coming from local levies.
That's right. Quite a bit less.
Right.
Yeah.
And so even though that we, it follows the same pattern, that big jump, that big property tax collection is a lot less than all these other years.
Right, which we are anticipating and budgeting for and projecting for, but that's part of why the curve looks so atypical.
Yeah. And the other one, kind of skips back to slide four, but it's what you talked about, the pupil transportation.
Yeah.
Running over budget. And I just want to kind of get your thought of, if it continues that way, it seems like we're looking at $1.1 million over budget just for that.
Yep.
That we can reasonably expect at least that amount, that we don't see any trends going the other way, that if we keep this trend of about 10% overspending on the things we need to do, that we're about $1 million over budget for that specific.
Oh, for that specific.
Program.
Yeah, I think so. I have another meeting scheduled with them to try to unpack. I mean, it's been a kind of a joint exploration. So, I mean, an assignment I could have is to come back to you to talk about that at the next presentation, following my two hours with Justin. We continue to probe that. You know, the homeless transportation is one of the cost factors that's a little atip, like it's not a normal curve, like it's not necessarily the same amount every month. So that's one of the things that, so a lot of these programs are just salaries, and so if we're paying salaries every month, and it's the same predictable amount, then you pretty much know, right? Some of them introduce a little bit more sporadic events that are harder to chart. So I would commit to having that conversation and being prepared to comment on that at the next presentation.
Sure. Thank you.
That was my question, too. And I also wanted to ask about SEB, how in the future, how that's going to have an effect on these numbers.
Okay. So I'll give you the short version. It's lengthy, and so there's a fair amount of anxiety among school districts about SEB.
Oh, we should define what SEB.
So, I'm sorry, the School Employee Benefits Board, it's the new statewide mechanism for providing employee health benefits. And keep my answer brief here, I could go for, I think that the primary, one major concern is that in the process of changing the way we do benefits, we've also changed the definition of who gets benefits. And the state is reluctant to pay for that part of it. So it could be that in this change, all of a sudden, we go from insuring X number to X plus a lot more. So that is potentially an unfunded liability to all school districts, and a particularly big one to, you know, larger districts. And then even if that isn't even an issue, even if there's no redefinition of the criteria for health benefit eligibility, even as the rates go up and the state keeps track, or keeps pace with the rates, so let's say the monthly rate is, I think it's going up to like $1,050 bucks or something, I can't remember the exact number, but that's in the ballpark. It used to, back when I was in legislature, it was like in the 800, and then it went to 900. It's, you know, steadily creeped up as healthcare costs have increased. Well, so they're providing us the funding for the state-funded employees for that rate, right? So that, to the extent, you know, going back to that slide where we show you all the employees that are in the district that are not funded by the state, we're paying the full boat on that, on that rate. We pay all of that. And so we lose control a little bit because they dictate to us how much our levy-funded staff are going to cost as it relates to health benefits. I hasten to add that there's a, I don't want to cast it in completely negative terms because the idea of giving health benefits to lots of employees is a, is, there's certainly a very redeeming quality to that and a public policy consideration. It's just an affordability issue, right? So I don't want to demonize the motives. I think the motives are very pure. It would be wonderful if we could all have, you know, it's just what costs are being passed on is really the concern, so.
Okay. All right. Thank you. And I know you're very ill today, so we appreciate you coming in.
Great, thank you.
Thank you very much. All right. We will move on to our public hearing 4.0, and it is public hearing on the sale of real property. So, all right. We will now receive comments on the sale of real property, Old Covington Elementary School. Any person wishing to submit written or spoken comments regarding the proposed sale may do so at this time. Are there any comments? All right. Hearing none. I will ask for a motion to close the public hearing. Is there a motion?
I move that we close the public hearing on the sale of Covington Elementary District property.
All right. Is there a second, please?
Covington Elementary District property.
All right. Any other discussions, questions, comments? Hearing none. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
And raise your right hand.
Aye.
Aye. All those opposed, say no and raise your right hand. All right. This hearing is now closed. 5.0, Board of Directors Discussion and Approval. 5.01, Our Decision Regarding Sale of Real Property, Old Covington Elementary. And we'd like to ask a board member to make a motion, please, to approve.
Move to approve the sale of the real property of the Old Covington Elementary.
All right. Is there a second?
I'll second.
Okay. A motion has been made regarding sale of real property, Old Covington Elementary. Are there any discussions or questions?
I'll give you one, at least, just because I'm reading it here in the agenda item, it has to do with having to publish the sale of the property for a minimum of a certain amount of days, and we can't sell it until after that.
That's correct.
If we met those criteria, if we take action tonight.
That is correct.
Okay. And this applies to the other process we've done, to where the city of Covington has a right of first offer that we've approved, they've offered, we've accepted it, whatever that is, we've done, and so thus, that we are waiting, once we put this up for sale, we are then waiting for their first offer.
That is correct.
Okay. Thank you.
All right. Call for a vote. All those in favor, say aye and raise your right hand.
Aye.
All those opposed, say no and raise your right hand. All right. Motion passes. We're up to 5.02, our Fiscal Recovery Task Force Action Plan Amendment. And I'd like to ask for a board member to make a motion to approve the amendment, please.
Move to approve the Fiscal Recovery Task Force Action Plan Amendment. Sorry.
All right. Is there a second?
I'll second.
All right. A motion has been made and seconded to approve Fiscal Recovery Task Force Action Plan Amendment. And are there any discussions or questions?
Well, I want to know that if we, as a board, are clear that we're making an amendment and why we need to make unamendment versus why we're making this amendment. So I mean, I'll start the discussion since I brought it up, but, you know, going back and forth, in my opinion, I think that we made a mistake in not being clear enough to the task force, granted, it wasn't formed at the time we put this action plan together. But the people that are now on there, that we didn't provide them enough clarity as to how they're supposed to go about their job. We spent a lot of time on the what, what we want them to look at, what we want them to do, report monthly to board, all this other stuff, but necessarily how it was supposed to be done and how they were, do it in the best way without impediment or in the sphere of how we wanted to put it together. And not that anybody has any other opinion, but I want to make sure that we're all clear that we're making amendment to help clarify, based on feedback that I think that we've heard from the task force, now that it's been formed, that they need more clarity on how they're going to go about their meetings and procedures. That we understand, regardless of how we feel about the amendment that we're making, that we need to make some amendment. Assuming no objections to that.
No.
Any other thoughts?
Well, I thought, well, the amendments, the changes that were made address whether or not they have the scope of determination as to whether their meetings will be subject to, they open Public Meetings Act. I think the scope of their work was shared. I think some of them didn't know to access that because there were documents and information shared with regards to what they were supposed to be doing and how they were supposed to be doing it. And I think that was clarified with them at one of the meetings. Is that not correct?
Well, they, everybody who applied for the position had a checkbox that said, I have read the action plan.
Right.
And the action plan is the action plan.
Right.
So they did have access when they applied.
Yeah, okay. Yes. So this is clarifying, basically, that they are not a decision-making body.
Right.
Right. I think it's clarifying.
It was already clarified.
I know, but just again, just.
Well, I think it's in the Task Force Meetings and Procedures section, as well as the scope of it, that we're clarifying what they do when they are together, and that there are, you know, that it is still the intent as it goes through here, that whatever they do comes to us, work session, a general meeting, however we choose, but that they, their meetings and their procedures are to be how they are, and then we need to provide more clarity, and we didn't provide enough in our action plan. But I think we are there in that this is the, being the first, well, at least, kind of our first go at this, that this is the appropriate thing, that we want them to be able to, this will help them be able to do the job we want them to do appropriately.
Yeah, and I just want to reiterate that these are, these are community members.
Right.
They're going to be doing a job. They're going to bring their findings and advice, whatever, to us in an open, public meeting, so that everybody's going to be able to hear what they have come up with.
Right. And this is the community input we were seeking when we formed this together. It still meets that purpose. Okay. I think we're clear. Hearing no objections.
Yes, and I did ask Debbie, I want to make sure all board members chime in on this. So I did ask Debbie for comment, and she said that I support the changes to the wording of the task force charter. I believe that the changes reflect the original intent of the board and provide clarification. And I appreciate the willingness of those who have committed to serve on the task force. So those were her comments. Okay. Any other? Okay. So no additional comments, and we will call for a vote. All those in favor, say aye and raise your right hand.
Aye.
And all those opposed, say no and raise your right hand. All right. Motion passes. Next up, 5.03 is our Independent Auditor Services, and Dr. Harmon is going to lead us in the discussion.
Good evening, President Van Goghdaslam, members of the board, Dr. Watts, Ms. Howley. I am presenting to you, I'll start with a slight recap. So you commissioned the request for proposal for audit services, and we advertised for those audit services in three locations. We expanded that to the Seattle Times. And based on that, the deadline for submissions was Monday evening at 4:00 p.m. We had one submission, timestamped at 3:40, double-signed and timestamped, and I'm presenting that to you. It's still sealed. And then we can talk about what's open, possible next steps of how to move forward. So given that there was one submission, you all will need time to review that submission and then make some determination on next steps. And so I would like to consider, as you are going through that and you're making that decision and evaluating that one proposal, what you would like to do moving forward in terms of if you decide to re-advertise. There were some clarifying questions sent from some interested parties that possibly there'd be some revisions based on some of those questions to clarify in the next round of advertisement, if you're not satisfied with what you receive. So I think you all need to discuss and determine kind of what's the next steps or procedures for, when you all will need to review, and how you would like that to happen.
Okay. Well, so can you tell us if the clarifying questions were asked by someone who actively submitted a proposal, or were there any questions asked by someone who did not submit a proposal? I guess that's what I really want to know.
I can't know because it's sealed, and they didn't say on the outside of the envelope. I'm sorry, I just, I.
No, I didn't know that either. Sure. So somebody asked questions?
Yes.
Gotcha.
And I did not see who submitted it, so I can't, I honestly do not know.
Well, I think that's, if we wondered that someone asked questions, we hadn't provided those answers, and they did not submit something, like we want to know that answer, know that status of that.
I also did not receive feedback saying, I need additional, like, so they submitted the questions, took those and explained that the board would need to kind of discuss those moving forward. It didn't, they didn't respond back saying that it was absolutely prohibitive and they're developing a proposal. So I don't know. It's possible that I could know, once you all open that, if that's something you'd like an answer to, I can share with you the name of that company and don't mind forwarding that on, but right now, I don't know.
Sure. Well, that's my concern. I'm concerned if some of the questions were about scope, the kind of questions you might ask when someone's trying to determine how I want to approach something, and so if they couldn't get their answers, then, and didn't submit, well, then I want to give them their answers.
Yeah, it's the same group that asked the questions.
Okay, that's okay. Next, if apparently submitted a proposal, thought, asked some clarifying questions, that's if we want to go forward, we can clarify those as we, assuming we make a determination
So you're waiting to hear, do we want to expand or extend?
Well, I think it's, we have a submission, therefore, it meets our criteria. We haven't reviewed it, but there's the opportunity to review it, seek to answer those questions, and then we're at a point where we basically accept or reject the single one, though we could, I'm assuming, tell them that we are going to ask for more.
So it's not so much that this particular process has to completely be carried out that way, but the determination of when you all schedule that and how you all would do that is part of the kind of open, public meeting process in that regard, because you all are the evaluating committee. So determining how and when you all will review that and coming to that discussion and decision here, kind of has to happen in this forum.
Can we have that discussion over a work session, or you would prefer it happen now?
That is up to you all. I would, so.
The timing, the timing.
Typically, so I deferred to organizational experts on the RFP process and how they conduct this. It typically takes a while to review, so typically take possibly a week, definitely a few days to give a deep read of the proposal. Sometimes organizations are invited in to do a presentation, to ask more additional probing questions, to get more information. And then you all would need to have some conversation about whether or not to move forward, and it's that actual, that I think is what's defined as taking an action, and so that would need to be held in an open forum, so.
Well, even in a place where we can take action, so typically not taking actions in work session, so I'm.
Right. So you can do the pre-work, yes, but in terms of actually saying that you're going to move forward, yes.
If we're able to take this and have time to review, would we think we'd be ready? So I mean, they can, you know, this firm can show up next Wednesday to work session, assuming we also have time, and then present what they want to present and answer any of our questions. I think we'd be ready by next Wednesday to do that.
Well, I, I don't know. We'll know until we begin to review it. I don't know.
Okay.
So I think we should be, have to have the opportunity to look. So I think we should be, have to have the opportunity to look at it and review it first. It's kind of a quick turnaround, so I'm not sure.
Okay, so then it's like pending, it's like we-
Right.
They won't start looking at it, but let the whoever this contact is know that we're doing that.
And for us to review it, it's going to have to be, so I'm wondering, because it's one document, so we're going to have to try and figure out how to get it to all of us. Are there copies for all of us?
There's three.
No, we're somewhere in the middle, we have three, it looks like.
So, okay, so trying to figure out how then it can get to all of us to review.
Two by two.
Yeah, and so I think that process, I think it could, that might be a quick turnaround.
So we can share one-way information out to you all.
Somebody can just-
And so we can make sure that there is an available copy for everyone. I thought about Director Strauss, so she's not even here to be a part of that, so we can make sure that everyone has.
Is it possible-
Has it available.
To scan the document and make sure everyone has it at the same time?
Yes, sir, and we can do that.
And then we could be prepared to discuss it. I'm not sure whether or not we could get the company here-
Right.
At that point, but at least be prepared to have a discussion ourselves, maybe at the work session on Wednesday and determine next steps at that point. Seems like probably the most logical thing to do.
Yeah, other things we could do, I think that's one of the things that we want, seem like we all want to go forward doing.
Yeah.
Start the review individually, come back and talk about it next Wednesday at work session.
Yeah.
At which point, you know, we're not taking any action, we're just coming to some consensus like then what to do next.
Now, is there any issues I think we need to consider if we want to extend this timeline and then others? So there already discussions have happened in public about this particular proposal and then we're asking others to bid on it. So there is a concern with that.
Let's say as of now, there's, we're not, these are, I understand, we're not accepting any more bids, meaning that the timeline is closed and we have-
But do we want to entertain that, is what I'm saying, and there's only one proposal.
So if I may add a piece of information as you are considering that, accepting additional submissions is an option. However, if that happens, it has to happen under a completely new request. And that initial submitter would have to resubmit under the new proposal number. So if you make that decision tonight, that essentially negates what is in your hand and we would start over. Or you can make that determination after you've reviewed what's in your hand and then we can make the decision to start over if you choose. You're not obligated to move forward with the RFP that's in your hand just by having it, but if you choose to move forward in a different direction right now, it negates what you have in your hand.
So being forward reopening it after we look at this, that's not going to be problematic because we're going to be discussing this at our work session.
So in order to prevent impact on future possible costs or competitors, I would probably refrain from naming the organization in your discussions in the public, naming cost parameters or those kinds of things in the discussion in public. But discussing the scope, how you feel about the quality of the submission, I would think is appropriate, as long as you're not giving away identifying information that could impact new request.
Mm-hmm.
Or new advertisement.
All right, so we don't need to take action tonight?
No, but in order for you to discuss it, we had to put it on the agenda and you had to be presented it.
Okay, thank you. Appreciate the opportunity and I think we'll do that by mistake. Okay, all right. Thank you very much, Dr. Harmon. All right, 5.04, inclusive education sensory cognitive instruction contracts. I'd like to ask a board member to make a motion, please, to approve.
I move that we approve the inclusive education sensory cognitive instruction contracts.
Second? Second. All right, a motion has been made and seconded to approve our inclusive education sensory cognitive instruction contracts. Are there any questions or discussions, please?
Yes, start with the questions I always want to know, which is, have we used this service provider before? Don't necessarily recognize them. So is this a says contract renewal, but understanding what are we actually renewing? Are we providing, renewing the contract? Are we renewing services that were provided existing and just having to do it again for the next year? A little bit more information, please.
Certainly, yes. And so we did use Lyndon Mubell last year, it just didn't meet that threshold to come to you guys. Now that we've lowered that threshold to 25,000, these certainly are two individual students and trying to be very, I'm treading lightly on FERPA to make sure that confidentiality isn't breached here, but we do have two students, elementary, and they are both attending one for the entire school year and the other for the entire school year, but it's been extended per the IEP team. So that was a decision of the consensus of the team to continue that amendment, which just extends, extends it until the end of the school year.
Okay.
Any other questions?
Anything additional? Okay, okay, great, thank you so much.
All right, call for a vote. All those in favor say aye and raise your right hand. Aye. All those opposed say no and raise your right hand. Okay, motion passes. 5.05, our Microsoft Professional Development Funding Number Three, and I'd like to ask a board member to make a motion to approve, please.
I move that we approve our Microsoft donation to purchase security solution software.
Right, is there a second?
I'll second, sorry, you were nothing.
Great. A motion has been made and seconded to approve 5.05 Microsoft Professional Development Funding. All those in favor say aye and raise your right hand, please. Aye. Oh, sorry, discussions, I need discussions.
I just wanted to be clear, there's two Microsoft donations on here. This is, the first one is for professional development funding, something about Minecraft through someone else, so is this, it seems like it's a continuation, so it's second semester, so you can clarify.
Yeah, it's a continuation of second semester. We have a series of a professional development that we're doing with I2E, our partner, and this is just the number third, so, our number three.
I'm sorry, I made a motion for the wrong one. I apologize. I did it for 5.07, 5.06 instead of 5.05. So I, can I?
Okay. Well, what do we do?
So we have to-
You can withdraw the motion.
I can withdraw, because I, all right, so I withdraw the motion, previous motion then, so, and I can restate. Okay, so I can restate, so I'm going to restate, so I withdraw my previous motion and move that we approve the Microsoft Professional Development Funding Contract, or Funding.
Second.
Okay.
All right. All right, no more discussions or questions, if hearing none, all those in favor say aye and raise your right hand. Aye. All those opposed say no and raise your right hand. All right, motion passes. 5.06, Microsoft donation to purchase security solution software. I'd like to ask a board member to make a motion, please, to approve.
Does anybody else touch on this? I don't want to do it again. Move to approve Microsoft donation to purchase security solution software.
All right, is there a second?
I have a second.
Okay, are there any discussions or questions?
I would under, well, I'll ask a question of, how did this come about? Because it's a donation, so I'm assuming you either applied for something or they offered it to a broad range and we said, yes, we'll take it. So can you give me a little bit of background about how this came about?
So there's been a significant increase in malware and, you know, spam and all kinds of things to the districts, especially to the school districts around in our area. We've been searching for a solution to make sure that we can be proactive and not allow people to click on those types of things. We presented that to some of our partners and Microsoft actually came back and said that as part of this, this is something that we've been doing with other school districts to give you the opportunity to do something that's a little bit more proactive, uses AI and can be ahead of the problem rather than us trying to clean things up as they happen.
I'm all for it. I've been subject to this and I'm ready to get something done.
Is this a one-time purchase or is this a, we'll have to renew each year?
So, yeah, this is a one-time purchase because it's part of a pilot in order to get us to the place that we can do it, and then from that point on, it should be self-sustaining. So we're hoping that this, again, solves part of the problem and then the rest of it will just be us tuning it over time.
Okay.
And to be, and I didn't see anything that did, but to be clear, it doesn't bind us into any future subscription payments for this service or from Microsoft in the future. This specifically, not-
This specifically, no.
Okay, all right, that was all mine.
All right. Call for a vote. All those in favor say aye and raise your right hand. Aye. All those opposed say no and raise your right hand. Right, motion passes. 5.07, Professional Development Management System Replacement. Is there a motion to approve? 5.07.
Move to approve Professional Development Management System Replacement. Frontline.
All right, is there a second, please?
I'll second.
Okay, motion has been made and seconded to approve Professional Development Management System Replacement. And are there discussions and questions, or questions?
Providing the information of why it needs to be replaced, being that the current one is being taken away by the provider, so I guess you can talk about process of why this one was selected. So you had to go through the process of selecting a new one. What about this makes this the best one that we should have?
So over the course of four months, we've done this process of walking through, setting criteria at the very beginning, inviting job role-alike people who are stakeholders in the process of professional development across the system, as well as kind of walking through the offerings. We had the people come out and do demos for those groups and created this focus group model. And then the focus groups created data based on whatever their review and based on what the matrix was. So we took that matrix information, compared it, talked through it more with the groups, and then came with, to a decision based on where the offerings were as far as on the scale and then also cost. So over the course of four months, we narrowed it down to the top two in this space, to the one that we're asking about.
Thank you. And does this start, when does this start? Does this start next school year or does it start now? Or?
The project would start as soon as, if we get an approval, then the project process will start immediately because we have data conversion as well as converting offerings that'll be extended to the next year. So all of that will start to happen training and I think we, hopefully we listed a, or included this in the information, but we would start as soon as this got approved. And then in the end of May-June timeframe is where we're hoping to go live.
So, Sean, how does this integrate with the other KSD system? It says that it manages PD data and integrates, it improves the integration, right?
So we have a subsystem that is from the same company and there are times where, when you're requesting a PD class, you need to request a sub as well. And when you have transition, sometimes the systems integration requires a person to do a lot of that work. And by integrating the systems, we can reduce a little bit of the lag time between requesting a sub and how that's assigned to a class.
So what are the systems here? Is this Staff Link or is it the same thing, right?
Um, no, the subs, it's ASAP Asset Management.
Okay.
Yeah.
Okay, all right, thank you.
There are a lot of systems, sometimes.
All right, are there any other questions? Mr. Christie, thank you, appreciate it. All right, we will now call for a vote. All those in favor say aye and raise your right hand. Aye. All those opposed say no and raise your right hand. All right, motion passes. We're up to 6.0 Consent Agenda. I'd like to ask the board if you'd like to pull an agenda item for discussion. All right, then I'd like to ask a board member to make a motion to approve Consent Agenda, please, 6.0.
I have moved that we approve Consent Agenda 6.0.
All right, is there a second?
Second.
Okay, motion has been made and seconded to approve Consent Agenda 6.0. Are there, well, there's, no questions. All those in favor say aye and raise your right hand. Aye. All those opposed say no and raise your right hand. Right, motion passes. 7.0, Board of Directors Informational. 7.01, Asset Preservation Program. These are reminders, these are informational, no decisions are made. Any thoughts, comments, questions? All right, moving on to 7.02, Procedure 6213P Travel Authorization and Expense Reimbursement. Any questions, comments?
Oh, sure.
All right.
But not, because I didn't want to. But, so we think about, this changed the procedure, so we don't have to approve this. So we think about, are these changes in line with required changes or are they, the hardship that either we've done to the policy or specific changes we want to see differently in our travel and expense reimbursement?
So we wanted to see different things because we'd asked about, and we talked to you about this before and I apologize, it's been a little bit of lag time since the last time it was on the agenda. And we were talking about changes in the practice of things like not auto, kind of pre-reimbursing per diem at a flat rate for expenses for every time that a staff member was in travel status. And going back and kind of itemizing that, meaning that if the conference you're attending provides breakfast, then we're not providing per diem for breakfast. You would only get it for lunch or dinner, or whatever meals are not included in the As we had that discussion, I think Director Daniels made a suggestion about, well, what about employees? Because one of the other changes that we made procedurally was that you would get it reimbursed and not provided upfront. And so we added clause and language around employees, formalizing that, that employees could make that request beforehand if there was a hardship, if there was a need. And so that's really the only change since the last time we presented this to you, just recognizing that we, although not directed to make that change, we took it under consideration and added that language.
Okay, thank you.
All right, 7.03, Procedure 6240P Food and Beverage Consumption. Any comments, questions? All right, not hearing any. We are moving on to our communication with, beginning with our student representative report, please.
Hello, I get to give my first more comprehensive report today. So today I actually had the opportunity to have a meeting with student leadership advisory, a very, very productive, very deep meeting with all the different students from our high schools. And I had the first opportunity to ask them, what are like different issues at multiple schools? And one that was brought up was a student from a school mentioned gender-neutral bathrooms. And an interesting issue is that there currently is a policy that was adopted, I think, last year, but none of the high schools or academies currently have gender-neutral bathrooms implemented. And that's really interesting and I just like to, you know, of course, bring it up because this affects not just all students of all grade levels, but also affects staff and affects the different morale among all the different students. Another student brought up for another occasion about the advisory program that's currently in our district and there was a wide consensus among all of the students and it was just really interesting to hear how different things are different in the different buildings in one of the most geographically diverse districts, but there's also other things that are the same. It was interesting to talk about what goes on in advisory, particularly about how in many cases, students don't feel advisory is effective, not because there's things they don't want to know, but because it's hard to be passionate about something if your teacher isn't. And that's really important when a lot of students echo the fact about how in advisory that teachers have told them it's not an effective usage of time and/or other students might want to be doing other things in advisory, such as homework or preparation for AP tests or whatever they choose to do. And that also goes back to what issues are covered in advisory. There are some students who would like to prefer have more deeper discussions on information- shared about active shooter drills versus how to stay organized as a student. So these are just all a wide variety of issues and that it's, however, we then transition the conversation into what's good about advisory. And they said, and one student reflected back during the beginning of freshman year where they had a teacher that explained the importance of it. They explain how a resume or how whatever item that was covered in advisory goes beyond what's needed for graduation. How does this actually prepare you? And that student reflected that those are the kind of conversations in where they do find advisory meaningful. So it's not that, in this case, the students from all the different high schools necessarily wanted to get rid of advisory, but there's things we would like to change. They feel that Naviance is a great tool. It's a great thing that can help students of all grade levels, but it needs to be delivered correctly. We then had a conversation about the different food drives, particularly among, at Kentwood, and how overall it's difficult to keep up a food drive when the changing student demographics of that school actually is where the majority of the students who are in that school need that food, depending on the changing socioeconomic demographics. And so we then transitioned to a conversation about how, how can high schools and how can different students of all grade levels come together and pool their efforts? There is a second food bank that I'm fairly sure that's opened up this year in Kent, and how can different high schools combine their resources and so, and also seek help from district administration so that some community organization isn't just receiving a message from a student who's in leadership from a high school, instead they're receiving a combined effort of multiple students from multiple high schools on how they can combine and make the most impact. I would just want to throw this out there because I love this acronym, and that is, we had a quick conversation about failure and how in particularly among high school students, it's a very big concern. It's, you can't fail, you can't fail a class, you can't do this. It's not that big of an issue because failure is actually a first attempt in learning. And I think particularly as students prepare for AP exams, they prefer the end of the year, and we continue school, I think that's just a great thing to throw out. I would like to recognize two students who were recognized by Kent School District on social media. I would like to recognize Tyler from Kentwood, who is also a hockey player and was recently recognized in the Seattle Times for scoring fourteen points for the Seattle Thunderbirds and also maintains a four-point-oh GPA. Congratulations to Gladys from Kent Meridian, who got a full tuition, full need ACT VI scholarship, and she is the only recipient of that in the Kent School District. So congratulations to students from Kentwood and Kent Meridian.
Absolutely.
So those are just great things. And I have another meeting of student leadership advisory next week, and I'm able to talk a little bit more about structure for student leadership advisory for the rest of the year, how we're going to be expanding recruitment for students and how we're going to improve on the different membership, and also continuing on that, we're going to focus on how to improve the application process for the next student representative, and I'm just really excited to keep doing this. So that's pretty much all I have to say. So, thank you.
Thank you. Thank you. That's wonderful. All right. Now, we will move on to communication from the audience, and we have several students speaking, so we'll begin with them. And when I call your name, a couple of reminders, you are asked to speak just for three minutes. Okay, thank you. And when I call your name, please come to my right-hand side, the podium to my right, and there will be a timer that goes off after three minutes, so please try to stay within the three minutes. And we will also ask that you please not mention any names or titles of individuals. All right, so we will begin with Austin Dickinson, followed by Megan Levin, Lewin, I apologize, Levin, Desiree Lanier, and Kim Quinn.
Should I get serious? Should I come out and speak?
Please come out.
I am Austin Dickinson. I'm a senior at Kentwood High School, and I just want to bring up a quick question about classes. At Tohoma High School, there are eight classes, and it's split up into four classes each day, and they have an hour lunch. Most of us at Kentwood are kind of jealous, we only have thirty minutes of lunch. But I wanted to bring up a point of possibly, after the Core Twenty-four is put into place after graduation of twenty-twenty, increasing class schedules to eight classes and have that four-block schedule also. It will help kids with more electives to learn what they enjoy the most and possibly also have business math as a required course, so kids learn how to do taxes outside of high school. And, or if, if increasing the amount of classes is not, is not a good idea, then have that three-block schedule with the same six classes, have a three-block schedule, so there's more time in class to do homework and study and ask questions, and have that hour lunch also. That hour lunch, that'd be kind of nice to have a little extra time, hit Wendy's maybe sometimes. But other than that, that's about it. Thanks for your time.
Thank you. All right, next is Megan.
Hi, my name is Megan Lewin, and I'm a senior at Kentwood High School, and I'm speaking in regards of student attendance. So I've noticed specifically with my school, they have adopted a very strict tardy rule, which is great, but I'm going to read to you this rule. The first tardy is a verbal warning and documented in Skyward. Second tardy is a teacher call home and one lunch detention. Third tardy is a referral and then a one-hour after-school detention, and then the fourth, fifth, and after that is a two-hour detention. While I think this is, disciplining for tardies is great, I also have noticed that this results in students missing class because they fear of getting those tardies and getting those detentions, so people are missing classes more, which is why I think there should be a stricter punishment for unexcused absences. Because unexcused absences are really what hinders students' educations, students' education and their ability to learn rather than a two-minute tardy. Thank you.
Thank you. All right. Desiree? Did I say that properly?
Hello, my name is Desiree Lanier, and I'm a student at Kentwood High School. I just wanted to share a concern that I've heard a lot from many of the other students at my school, that people are wondering if graduation date will be moved at all because of the snow dates. And we, we missed a lot of school because of the snow this year, more than usual, and that's just something that has been on a lot of students' mind. Thank you.
Thank you. And we'll answer these questions on our board webpage. Kim Quinn?
Hi, my name's Kim Quinn. I'm a person of the community. My daughters have both graduated from Kent Schools, and I'm currently employed at Igrad. Wanted to let you know that I, I read the emails, the board communication, and there was a lovely quote that, from Angela Davis, "I am no longer accepting the things I cannot change, I am changing the things I cannot accept." And to me, for Igrad, this was my calling. So I wanted to thank you all for coming to Igrad and letting us know changes before we read them online, that Igrad will be utilizing only one storefront as, based on student need. One storefront is not enough for student needs. We did a, per Kent School District request, we did a hour-to-hour student count for a whole week. And many, many of those timed sessions, we had more than thirty students. And several, we had more than forty students at one time on campus. One storefront would limit us to two tiny classrooms that have a joint capacity of thirty students. Not thirty students apiece, joint between these two classrooms, we can house thirty students. So cutting the storefront and losing the entire east side will cut our program in Now, I noticed that there was a drop in enrollment in the numbers from Igrad, and that would reflect our loss of five hours a day, twenty-five hours a week from last year to this year because we lost our assistant principal. Not having an assistant principal limits the time, the hours per day, that we can be open. We can't exist without having an admin there. So I guess what I'm asking is that we get a vice principal back, we can add those evening hours back in. Somebody had suggested, well, shifting some of those day students to evening. Our day students will not move. They're coming in the day because they can come in the day. The evening students that we lost, we might be able to get them back, or that same sort of population, the working students, the parent students, those are the students that come in the evenings. The ones that we have in the mornings are ones that are coming to school when their siblings are at school. They have to be home to take care of their, their siblings at that two-thirty, three o'clock when the other schools are getting out. So adding the extra hours will increase our enrollment by bringing new students in, but not if you cut the, the square footage. So I encourage you all to come and visit us. We would love you to see the space that you're looking at, and I guess that's it. Thank you.
Thank you. Justin?
So my name is Justin Seemers. I'm a parent of a young child that will be potentially attending the Kent School District. I'm here to ask the school board exactly why the policy for early childhood admittance for testing has a current cutoff date of October thirty-first. I sent to the board a copy of the school districts within the state of Washington by size that provides cutoff of both October thirty-first, which is the current Kent School District, but also the cutoff for other large districts, including Bellevue, Lake Washington, Spokane, that have dates all the way out to November thirty-first, October thirty-first, or, excuse me, December second. It was brought to my attention just last night that the procedure had been just recently revised, and it was revised to, from February twenty-eighth to October thirty-first. So I'd like to ask the board exactly what drove the date change, why there is not a policy to appeal the current testing date, and also to better understand what requirements in terms of, it was shared with me that part of this is driven by testing and the ability to test students. So how many students last year actually did go for the examination? How many were accepted? And then also, what is the current capacity for a number of students to be tested? I think that these are things that the board would need information-wise from the district to better understand what the current policy is. Again, this question was brought up during a community conversation, and it doesn't feel that the district answered the question that was asked, at least not for what, what I was looking to try and obtain. Restating the current policy doesn't really give any justification for it. So I'm pretty much here to ask for assistance in understanding why, and if there's an ability to allow for a child who may be ready to start kindergarten just a little bit earlier but is not given that opportunity to even receive the test to see if they're prepared. It just, I, you know, board members have said that they want to provide the best opportunity for all student learners, and by not allowing them to even take the exam to see if they're ready, doesn't seem to provide that. So I'd like to pose those questions and hope that I can get some, some help with understanding how it's currently structured. So, thank you.
Thanks, Justin. Thank you. Wayne Jensen, followed by Ron Delay.
Before you start that timer, the Microsoft piece, the MEE, the Minecraft Educational Edition, yeah, it's the right thing we're doing. I'll tell you that most of the programmers that are stationed up in Redmond are women. For a father of three daughters, that's great, but they'll be in my classroom on April nineteenth to actually see how the program works and to work with a bunch of third graders. I think it's pretty cool that we can get those people to come down and spend time with our kids. I would also agree, if you want to make high school better, yeah, figure out how to add more electives, because you don't need to jump two, three, four, five, six, seven, eight. So for you seniors, I agree with you. All right. So my conversation has to deal with the why-do-you-stay interviews, whatever it is we keep talking with staff. Well, I figured instead of being anonymous in a staff room somewhere, I'd go ahead and put a face to it. I'll go through them real quick. Dr. Watson, we met earlier this year, and you were watching me and my colleagues plan. I told you some of the issues, you said, how do those fit with our four goals, our pillars? First off, let's talk about the report card. This bloated, floating, dead whale, a two-pager that is truly a complete waste of time for those of us in the elementary, to follow the old proverbial statement, take that pet up to the State Farm up north and put it to rest. We'd like to change the report card to help us out in parents. Parents want to know how their kid's doing. They really don't care about a particular statute of common core. It's a waste of their time. They really want to know, tell me how I can improve my child. Conferences, oh my God, stop the goal-setting format. Save us the time and the trouble. Same with parents, that's all I heard last week. Why do we do it? Don't know, couldn't tell you, but we definitely need a better system. For me, I meet with parents in June. How about we move conferences to the last week of June, so snow days don't matter? How about we actually send parents into the summer with their students, actually telling them what their kid needs to do over the summer to prevent summer slide or anything else? That's when we need to partner with them, not October, not February, not March, not April, end of June. Vertical curriculum, oh my God, just blow it up. If you can't figure out how to make K through twelve work, then stop. But the fact that we have so many different aberrations, I can't even take it. As someone that left corporate America and a very successful job to come and be a school teacher, I'll move on. Bell schedule, why for the love of God does this make sense? My building should have started at eight-thirty, not gone until three-forty. I have teachers that show up in the dark, leave in the dark. I have students that show up in the dark, leave in the dark. We should have started the day early. As a teacher, I'd rather have three or four hours at the end of the day than to finish duty, get everything started, and when I'm supposed to leave at four oh five, that's when I finally have time. The bell schedule needs to change. We made that decision, I want to think, because it's a financial actuality and not what's best for students, because I'm not going to find one argument that says the current bell schedule is what's best for students. Calendar. Look, to teachers, parents, and anyone else that's whined about having to go an extra two or three days in June, it's not because of four days in February in the mid-winter break. We have to accept the fact that, have we educated students in nineteen nineteen, nineteen twenty-nine? I don't give a damn on the year, but I'll tell you right now, we need a three-hundred-and-sixty-five day calendar that addresses all of our students. We have come up with this phrase, summer slide. That's sad and pathetic that we recognize it. I'll go ahead and end on that, but I got to be honest, we have to fix the calendar, and it's not four days in February.
Thank you. Ron Delay.
My name is Ron Delay. We've met before. Most of you should have gotten my letter last Friday. I think all board members except you, I'm sorry, because you're a student and you told me you couldn't vote. What can I tell you? But anyway, I'll get you a copy of it. Anyway, as you know, on the eleventh, HR came to our building and asked to meet with the teachers of Igrad, at which time we were told that the two other academies were going to be splitting a hundred-and-fifteen-thousand-square-foot building with two new assistant principals added to the mix of a library, commons, gym, two music rooms, a shop, and many more classrooms than needed, and the list goes on. However, we were told that we were going to be dismantled, basically. Oh, I'm sorry, the individual didn't say dismantle, that's, that's my term, because it seems to me when you take a twelve-thousand-square-foot space and decide and tell us... and tell us that it's going to be cut in less than half of that, no discussion, that's it. But tell us how we're going to be able to make this work. That was interesting. Oh, and by the way, we're going to basically get rid of your "it takes a village" partners, the very thing that makes it work. We're not going to have Seattle Education Alliance there, Goodwill has to go, Asian Counseling has to go, the tech industries have to go because they're not going to be in the same space as you guys. Well, first of all, you don't have that space anymore, so they'll have to find something else. So, they're going. Interestingly, this worked out to about three weeks to the day when Carol had asked for an internal audit because of General Ben's presentation. And all of a sudden, it seemed to me this filled into a kind of thing of, why did this happen? Why is she not given an assistant principal who could keep at least the building open in the evenings? Why give an EA, which is an educational assistant? And the only thing I can think of is that because somebody was being vindictive. That's the only thing I can glean from this. I've seen a lot of, and I'm not going to, I certainly won't name any administrators or anything like that. I will mention that we still don't have the meal program. I understand the form had to be signed, and it's been sitting on some administrator's desk for quite some time now. But anyway, that's sort of where we are, and I'm quite disgusted, and you should be too. But more so, you should be ashamed.
All right. We'll move to our legislative update with Director Hardy, please.
All right, thank you. Recall, last time we talked, there was what we call a House of Origin cutoff, meaning basically if the bill didn't get out of the House, go to the other one, there was no new bills. So, really only tracking the bills that did that are basically in the other houses committees. And that's where we're at right now, we're mostly in committees. Now, if you really wanted to spend some quality time, there was a new revenue and budget forecast that has come out. You can read it, it's a lot of fun. I'll start with that overall, because mainly, as kind of expected, expenses outstrip revenues by a decent margin, and so the main focus of that committee is not cutting expenses, but rather coming up with new tax revenue generation. So, I say that because it's a topic that affects everybody, but that is a topic that if doesn't get solved, then the cutting begins. And so, I'll pivot that with saying there are technically about thirty days left in the current session, but there's been a history of not being able to finish a budget within a current session. So, as of now, the end of the session is April 28th. The goal is to basically get all the bills that we have out of committee to the general, whatever house they're in, and vote on them. So, those bills, special education funding, I think I made this in my newsletter, SB 5091. The main thing is just increasing, again, the kind of cost multiplier that you get. Right now, it's at .96 to 1, but of course amendments can be made, and 1.02 has been thrown out there. But it's in the House Education Committee, and they are taking testimony on it. So, of course, if you really feel like it, you can go down there and testify, but that is going forward as it is right now. Oh, the other one, the school levies. So, the school levies was all over the place when it started, meaning amendments to the limits that schools could have. As we talked about in our budget presentation, we went down a lot because the current law is $1.50 per $1,000 assessed value, or $2,500 per pupil. We're nowhere near that, so we're at $1.50. Tossed all over the place, right now, 5313 has it at $2.50 per $1,000 assessed value. So, that is the current of what we're looking at to, that would just allow districts to raise more money in any kind of local levy. There's an extra-large district cap for pupil per student, 3,000 instead of 2,500, probably won't affect us, but at least that's something that could be coming in a course once it's passed. No one sees effect until you pass a new levy that then collects that amount of money. Other things that we've been tracking is the pure decoupling or delink, however you want to say it, from state-mandated tests for graduation. They've actually had a call-out, so this was something that, if you're interested, they're wanting a lot of input on this. What does it mean? Because they're coming up with this list of multiple pathways, but the law won't require school districts to offer all of them. And so, what they really want to know is, and I think we've seen this before, but of course, you know, bring it up again, quantifying the number, the percentage of students either in this class or next year's class that would basically not risk graduating because they don't meet the state standards of these alternatives. This is the input that legislators are looking for to kind of push this decoupling and establish the multiple pathways. So, please share that. Of course, I know we have that information that I will share from what we've already been presented, but that's something that they're very interested in. Wanted to share one more that was, gained a lot of steam. Here it is here. There's actually a bill to make revisions to policies related to par educator courses of study, professional development and certification, specifically focused on reducing barriers for par educators on the limited teaching certificates, working in teacher roles to become fully certified. So, there's a state push to remove barriers, for barriers, excuse me, for par educators wanting to be conditionally certified and to enter a full certified teaching career. Hospital 1658, if you want to follow it, that is making its way through, no real strong objections, because it's a policy change and necessarily a budget implication. So, as we kind of look forward, I know we've had local legislators, they had town halls last Saturday, what the really, a lot of the non-budget impact items are kind of moving forward. Anything that has a budget impact is pretty much in its original committee now. Obviously, each one will move in either appropriations or ways and means. That'll be the real test of things that aren't education-related being pitted against things that are education-related that cost money. And so, I know that we're interested in partnering with any education-focused organization advocating for any expansion of revenue or expansion of services from the state that may be considered to be taken away as we go forward. Not any as of yet, as we say, stay tuned. Effectively, over the next month, the legislature's supposed to figure all of that out. So, we'll keep in touch.
All right, thank you. Dr. Watts, this is the superintendent's report, please.
Yes, thank you, President Vengadossala, members of our board, Ms. Hawley, community, staff and friends. I first want to be mindful of the snow days. It was an eventful winter. At the same time, we know that we made some very calculated decisions based on the work, hard and smart work of staff to prioritize safety, and we did that at the expense certainly of our attending school on time. And so, what we were offered the opportunity to request a waiver, and I received most recently a letter from OSPI, and I'll read the content addressed to me. "I have reviewed your request at the Kent School District, received state apportionment funds for the emergency school closure on February 11th, 12th, and 13th, 2019. Request is due to an unforeseen snowfall and icy conditions, which may travel to and from school hazardous. Cancellation fell within the winter storm state of emergency, which was issued by our governor, Inslee, in the proclamation 19-02. This event is within the eligibility criteria of Washington Administrative Code 392-129-125. The district will still maintain compliance with the requirement of 1,027 instructional hours, even with the loss of three school days. The Kent School District will receive basic education funding for three days of school closure for the days of February 11th, 12th, and 13th, 2019. If you have any further questions, I've been given contact information. Letter was written from Thomas J. Kelly, otherwise known as TJ Kelly, is the interim chief financial officer of the Office of Superintendent of Public Instruction. Given that, the fact that we have received this letter, again, this letter also signifies approval of our waiver request, and once calendars have been revised and we've submitted that information, official communication will be submitted from our district office first to our board, then to staff, and then to our community. I wanted you to have this preliminary information first to let you know that the process has been followed. We appreciate the acceptance and adherence to this process, and we thank you for your patience. Please stay tuned for further communication updates. With that, I also have a Core 24 update to share with you and the implementation. I've shared in many different venues with Kent Area Council, PTSA leaders, staff, and community members. This update of the Career and College Ready Graduation Requirements Committee is now, and what will affectionately be known as such, we want to make sure that we honor our goal two, which is two-way meaningful communication. And in this case, broad communication will begin this week, and we will be soliciting volunteers, some of you may have received communication already, for the Core 24 committee. The goal of this committee is to obtain 20 to 30 consistently attending members across these groups of families, parents, students, principals, assistant principals, counselors, teachers, and community-based organizations and any other stakeholder groups supporting teaching and learning in Kent School District. We will be providing an intake survey process through Survey Monkey, a link which will, again, invite interested parties to express your interest in serving on the committee, and the information will then be communicated beginning March 29th, and that will be communicated through New in the Blue, through our communication venues, as well as the district website. So, please stay tuned and look forward to that communication. The scope of work, the timeline, the cross-functional relationships, all of those details will be included in that attachment. We do say 20 to 30 consistently attending members, and I use this research-based statistic. If you really want people to show up, think about this. If you invite 100 people to a party, and a party is defined as what most people want to attend, you can typically only rely on 50% of a participation rate consistently. So, while I enjoy meetings sometimes, not as much as I'm sure parties, the reality is a meeting, we are going to need 20 to 30, so we are sending out as many calls to you. So, tell a friend, and we look forward to your continued support. I also want to share, I had a recent visit of many school visits, one most recently to an art class, to Mr. Adam Jones, who teaches art at Kentwood, and he had invited me, I was not able to go to an earlier session, but he invited me to students who were completing their art based on Jacob Lawrence's work. And for those who are not familiar with Jacob Lawrence, he is one of our own. He's a Pacific Northwestern, University of Washington professor, famous artist, painter, who happens to be African-American, who happens to have spent most of his life painting about the migration series, which was one of his most famous series, about African-Americans who migrated from the southeast, either due north, due west, or northwest. And what I was able to witness was the number of students who were able to capture the stories that were told by Jacob Lawrence so well in their painting, and they were able to share with me exactly what the stories were, why they enjoyed painting. I said, "Look, I know right now, based on what I see, when, not if, your works are hanging in a museum somewhere soon, I can say I knew you when." With that, I also worked with him, and we were working with team in district office to ensure that those works are displayed in some way so others can witness the talents of our youth and the skills of our teacher, Mr. Adam Jones. So, thank you to he and his class and support staff for creating a art-filled environment. I'd like to end my comments today with this update with regard to communication concerning our Spring Brook Elementary School events that have occurred recently. I understand that the interest in bringing this investigation into the events at Spring Brook Elementary School to a conclusion, although the investigation is still ongoing, please know the district is doing everything we can to bring this process to a close. We also must respect the process to ensure that the investigation is both thorough and complete, which is in the best interest of all who are involved. We do expect that the investigation will be completed soon, and we will communicate the results to all impacted individuals at that point in time. Thank you for your continued patience, and at this time, that concludes my report. Thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Watts. All right, Denise.
Okay. I forgot about you, I'd already done it. Good evening, thank you all for coming. It's really wonderful to see you guys, as usual. So, I want to start with, I had the opportunity to attend a Strand concert, which I always enjoy, because it's elementary, middle, and elementary and middle school is coming to the high school that I think believe it's a feeder kind of program, and so they all get to perform, and just a wonderful opportunity. Our kids are so amazing, and so, and our teachers are amazing, and so it was a really, really great concert, and I always enjoy going to that. It's about my fifth year going at this point, and so it was a really wonderful opportunity. So, I encourage you to go to the musical performances, go to the plays. Our kids are amazing, and you will enjoy and be entertained. Another thing that I had the opportunity to do that I think, well, so I think about our students, and I think about our students in leadership and striving to be leaders in their community and their buildings, and one of the difficulties that I've heard as I've worked, so I've had the opportunity to work with several student groups over the years, that's kind of a part of what I do, and a lot of the communication is that they really don't see familiar faces. They don't see a lot of people that look like them, in particular, students of color. So, I had the opportunity, I was invited to go to the elected officials of color reception at the governor's mansion about a week ago. I think I can't keep up. And it was amazing to see such a diverse group of people representing our community, and so I was very excited, in particular because I was thinking about, you know, when our kids say they don't often have people that look like them in leadership, that they can look up to. What an amazing opportunity. There's so many, there were so many, a room filled with over 100 people that were just amazing leaders in their community, and so I was really excited by that. And so, I went back and I shared that opportunity with some of the students that I support and I work with, and so I'm really, really excited to see that our leadership is beginning to represent the diversity in our communities, and that our kids are going to be able to see that. So, I just encourage people, you know, if you, you know, get involved, if that's something that you want to do, because it's really important for us to provide opportunities for our kids to see themselves in spaces that they don't always, that they are not always able to. So, that was a really kind of a highlight, just really engaging with intelligent, passionate, amazing people who really want to make change for the better for our students and for our future. So, I'm really excited to share that, and I really hope to be able to participate in more of that in the future, and also bring student groups, because I think as we take students to legislative days and all these other opportunities, I think it's really important for our students to be exposed to the opportunities that they can have. So, that's, that was my report. Thank you.
I hope I don't start coughing. I attended the Kiwanis Middle School Essay Contest Winter Luncheon a couple Fridays, Fridays ago, I guess it was, and it's amazing what our kids write, and it's amazing the experiences that they've had and that they've come through and are coming through. There were cases of abandonment, bullying, suicide of a cousin, learning English, and fitting in, and it was amazing, and the kids got up and read their essays, and some of them cried, some of us cried. Very moving, and the fact that they could put those emotions out on paper and be able to read them to a large group of people, I think, was really important for them. So, I've been there before, I really look forward to that. Last Thursday was the Communities and Schools Annual Fundraising Breakfast, and I want to thank everyone who... to thank everyone who went, and everyone who put baskets together for the raffle, and people who bought tickets for the raffle, and people who gave monetary donations for that during the ask. I know prior to the breakfast, Communities and Schools had $30,000 pledge, which is more than they've ever had pledged prior to the breakfast. So I still haven't heard what the final total was, but it was a nice big group, so I'm hoping for the best. Communities and Schools is nonprofit, works completely on donations and grants, and grants are iffy. You don't always get the grants that you want, and you don't always have, they don't last very long. So it's really important that we support the Communities and Schools. They work with our mentoring, one of our big mentoring groups that help adults get out into the schools. They have wraparound services, all kinds of wraparound services for students who are really needy. So it's just, I can't say enough about it, and kudos to Dr. Behringer for being our emcee, he did a great job, so thank you for that, I appreciate you stepping up for that. And then Saturday, I went to the Kent Panther Lake Library grand opening, and there was a huge group of people there, lots of kids, and a lot of cake pops that were being eaten, and I'm sure they had to shampoo the carpet afterwards in there, but it looks like a really nice facility, and I'm really pleased for our families up in that area, the Upper East Hill, that are going to be able to access the books and the movies and all kinds of things that are there. So that's my report.
Say, I was also very happy about the opening of the Kent Panther Lake Library. It's right by my house, it's probably like a five-minute walk, and so saw it as it kept going up, right? It was an empty casino for the longest time, and then was nothing, and then finally turned into something that the whole community can use. And so I'm very excited. It kind of extends our network of, you know, there, downtown Kent, and the Communion Libraries that people have access to and enjoy a lot, so I'm very happy. I know that it's, it was a big fanfare, right? There was like close to 1,000 people there, I think I heard. But, you know, it's nice, it's a great place to hold, it's not just books, it's meeting rooms, it's...
Technology.
Well, it's technology. I mean, there's kids that, you know, they'll be able to use the library in school, which has been very helpful, but outside the school hours, we have another resource that's available to them, and I'm so very glad for that. The other part is less visible, you know, I know whenever I give my legislative report, I talk about what I tell you. A lot of it's, you know, providing input to legislatures, you know, when they ask for it, to them or to their staff, providing written input into various committee public hearings. It's not all glamorous, and, you know, it's a lot of administrative review of things, but it's important to get our position out there of, this is what we care about, this is what's important to us, please support this position, whatever it is, please support this bill as it goes through. So of course, any time that you reach out to me, I reach out to them, and I also reach out to them other times, to make sure that they know that we're, you know, we're important, we're top of mind, and that they keep moving forward, whatever's important to us. So you don't see a lot of that, but it's happening kind of in that background. And the other great opportunity that I always enjoy is sitting down and getting to talk directly with some of our teachers. And so that's a privilege I had on Monday, I always enjoy it. This is where I recommend, basically doing that with board members. I know we go and visit schools, and it's great, but every time we're there, teachers, administrators, they're focused on the kids, they're doing their regular job, and we're kind of standing in the background observing. This is a chance for a, at least for me, I love the kind of direct, no-filter conversations with our employees or with the staff members, and so I encourage board members to do that, to kind of get, you know, multiple perspectives as we seek those outside of the board meeting. So if you would like, you know, set that up with me instead of going by yourself, that's fine, too, but of course, I recommend that to everyone. So that's my report.
Well, thank you. I also appreciate that we have opportunities to meet with our public, whether they're teachers, parents, and my whole neighborhood is full of educators, so I have plenty connections with them. One thing, a couple of things I want to talk about this past several weeks. Dr. Watts and I did meet with our Fiscal Recovery Task Force per their request. They had asked just to come in and give some background. So I just want to really thank and appreciate, show appreciation for how highly skilled the group of individuals who are helping us move forward with positive steps, taking positive steps, moving forward. And so I'm sure they will be coming back to the board to discuss all of their findings. I also want to thank Jonathan Armanita, this band director at Kent Lake Strand Band, Kent Lake Band Director. He was, at the last minute, he had to be a sub for our Cedar Heights Band Director, and so he took on double duty for his Strand Festival, so I want to thank him for that, and he is just stellar. So I agree with you, Denise, we have a fantastic program, and we're just excited about Dr. White coming onboard and having some processes in place, and really boosting our programs to where it used to be. And I also enjoyed our Communities and Schools breakfast, our Cherry Blossom Festival with our Japanese partners, enjoyed going to the library opening. And I want to say about the library, that was a vision that a group of us had in 2011. We talked about it at the Kent East, Kent East Hill Revitalization Project, and a group of community stakeholders envisioned this library, and so that was really fabulous to see it open. Had a chance to meet with our PTSA group and give updates and hear about their events. And then finally, I want to say, last couple of weeks, I think, the amount of work that our central office staff have been, have had to complete, has been incredible amount of work, and I just want to thank Karen Howley for gathering all the information needed for so many of our inquiries that are going on. And also thank Dr. Harmon for quickly responding to our constituents. I just think, not just both of them, there are so many folks here who demonstrate what it means to be transparent, open, and actually want to represent us well in making sure that we meet the requirements of our constituents. So I know there are a lot of people working hard, sometimes we all feel, fall short, but we are trying to make sure that we meet all of the requirements of our constituents and needs of our constituents. So with that, I want to thank you all for coming tonight, and have a safe drive home. We are adjourned.